Everybody, please rise for a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Hey, bow your heads for just a moment. Dear Lord, we ask you bless over the crowd here today. Help us make decisions that are wise. And in the spirit of good nature and the spirit of love and trust. We ask that you enrich all of our daily lives with all our county employees, give them good morale to serve the public in the best way possible. We ask this in God's name, amen. Yeah, the next public workshop will be Tuesday, October 24th, 10:00 a.m. in this room. Our next regular meeting will be Wednesday, October 25th, 10:30 a.m. in this room. And then we'll have a special meeting on Wednesday, October 25th at 1:00 p.m. Uh, for our TID that we established over the last couple of weeks. And uh, that was the best day that worked for everybody uh involved. Madam clerk.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Here.
Ms. Frenchco.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the regular meeting dated October 12th, 2023. And accept and approve the video recording of the October 12th, 2023 Commissioner's regular meeting as the official meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Gashin. We need to start doing um written minutes of our meetings. That's what it's ultimately going to come to. Uh, recently, the attorney has been forwarded proof of items and asked to review thirty minutes, I believe, of audio. Or in order to verify that she's doing something correctly, that there was formal approval. The attorney is then being billing the county to listen to something that could have been written in a simple minutes. And could she could have done it at a glance. So I it's inefficient and it's causing additional expenses. Legal expenses when you're sending audio for people to listen to, you know, cumulatively hours of, and then they're billing at attorney rates when we can just have our clerk write minutes and send it to them. It's.
I disagree. If there's something she needs, we could have staff transcribe.
Which one's that? Oh, I haven't.
What is going on?
Okay, we can have we can have one of our staff transcribe it for the attorney before she gets it, if that's what the issue is.
It's not.
We don't have to have the attorney go through thirty minutes of time.
It's not about transcribing.
Martha Yoder.
Wait, wait, no, this is a board meet of commissioners meeting we're discussing, okay?
Okay.
It's not a matter of transcribing. If we're going to transcribe, that's another statutory way that that's acceptable to do the minutes. In lieu of having video for hours and hours or audio for hours of hours. And it and on top of that, there there's nothing ever approved. So we've got an attorney who's billing the county for listening to audio. To to verify things. It should be just written in the minutes.
Commissioner Malloy, um, I just want to address because the specific email that she's referring to is one that I sent. I did not give her thirty minutes of audio to listen to, and you also received that email. If you not sure if you had time.
I think you ordered to go.
I gave I gave her at least at least every space. She doesn't have to listen. That's why I did it that way. So she doesn't have to listen. By the way, this is Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. No, I have to introduce myself, apologize. Um, she didn't have to listen to the whole meeting. I gave her exactly where in the meeting things were talked about.
So you would give her a page number to look at.
Absolutely, and I did that, and I spent my time doing that so that it would be accurate. Thank you.
Actually, when Mr. I I think Mr. Masaki was sending them over before, and he sent the exact minute or or an actual clip of when they said they approved it. No one should have to listen to fif- ten or fifteen minutes of discussion.
Ten minutes, thirty seconds.
Yeah, there is. There's a window when everything was cited on there with where to go right to digitally, and they can go right to the digital moment in time on the recording and and listen to it. I read the email that way.
Okay. I I disagree. This is we're gonna ultimately be doing them the right way. So I just think it's a wise idea.
We are doing them the right way.
An audio recording is not proper minutes.
You're absolutely wrong on that.
I'm sure our attorney has has advised us that it is.
So I'd like to see that because it doesn't exist that I've seen, so.
You you will see it. You sued us for it, and you will see it.
Right.
You sued the county for it.
You you'll be writing minutes soon. We'll see. Okay. I this is just it's ridiculous for people to have to go. Anyone who wants to see what happened at a at a meeting, at a workshop hat or our regular meeting has to go through and listen to hours and hours of talking in order to find out what happened at a meeting, and it's cumbersome, and I think that it should be more efficiently done.
I don't know if it's more efficiently done if somebody in our office is transcribing meetings for hours and hours either. That's money as well.
We had we had dozens of hours of overtime with our last clerk doing it home in the evening just to try to get caught up on doing it that way. That's why we went away from that to save expense and save employees' time.
Actually lacks lacks transparency and efficiency to the public.
Why? They they see it and hear it for themselves, not someone else's words. There's nothing more transparent than that.
There has always been an audio backup of the meetings. There has never been the Board of Commissioners saying, if you want to know what happened, go listen to two hours of it. It's just disrespectful, I believe, to the public. Call the question.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
No.
You vote, but last week you voted yes. You can't make up your mind. Last week, we had the same exact agenda item, and you voted yes. This week, you voted no. Next week, what's it gonna be?
Point of order. This is not the this is there's no discussion after a vote. Please learn how to run a meeting or hand the gavel to someone who can do it better.
Item number two.
Item number two is to dispense with reading the minutes of the ARPA workshop meeting dated October 3rd, 2023. And accept and approve the video recording of the October 3rd, 2023 Commissioner's ARPA workshop meeting as the official meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
For the same reason that I believe that the meeting minutes are being done incorrectly and they should be written, no.
Item number three is to approve the bills.
Motion to approve the bills.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number four is to approve additional appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number five is to transfer appropriations.
Motion to approve the transfer appropriations.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number six is to award the lowest and best proposal as submitted by Julian and Groob to provide Trumbull County with assistance in preparing GAAP basis financial statements in the annual comprehensive financial report for a three-year period ending December 31st, 2023, December 31st, 2024, and December 31st, 2025. Services for this project will be billed to Trumbull County on January 15th, March 15th, and upon report completion each year. The cost of the project is nineteen thousand six hundred for 2023, nineteen thousand four hundred for 2024, and nineteen thousand two hundred for 2025 for a total amount of fifty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, dis- discussion. It appears as if there is only one bidder that responded, and I have not received a copy of the actual proof that this was advertised in the amount of time or the dates that these uh bidders, it said that they did not respond with quote by deadline. Uh, I it's odd that there are five asked and only one responded, and no one provided me with any backup information to show that, and I'm also curious as to why the auditor is not performing this duty in-house. This is a basic accounting um report. And why they're not cutting the cost if they're internally, if they're outsourcing a portion of it. And is there any backup information? Did do we have um, and this is a I've been asking on a regular basis to see the proof that what I'm voting on has occurred, and I don't see I don't see it clipping of the advertisement. That does the office have that?
I provided everything that I was given.
Are you you trying to micromanage the auditor's job? You want to oversee every single thing she does?
Again, it's a separately elected office. If you could vote no, if you don't want to.
The duty, let me just explain for the board. The duty of the commissioners is to is to contract on behalf of everyone, and that's why we look at these things, and we should be providing that oversight because that's the job of the.
Correct, but in this in this case, we have we have used this uh method for gap financing for as long as I can remember, and probably for the last thirty years, and probably all eighty-eight counties in the in the.
Actually, they did. I did some research.
Which ones do not?
About fifty fifty. You can you can look that up just as I did. So I what I'm saying is.
Fifty percent of the counties are doing it incorrectly. And by the way, this is the auditor's call.
No, it said.
You can vote no if you don't want to fund it, but that's up to you.
What I'm saying is that there's not any additional information provided. You don't just send over, this is my agenda item, put it on without any supporting documentation.
This is the information provided.
Right, this is this is all that came to us. We're as a board, as a commissioner, it's I believe it's my duty, if you don't believe it's yours, that's that's fine, to review things to make sure that the process, the contracting process was done was done right. That's what we're what's what we're here for. So, okay. Call the question.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Because I was provided nothing but what everyone in the public sees right now, and we're supposed to be making sure that our contracting process is done correctly. I have to vote no.
Item number seven is to establish the creation of the dog kennel donations to be known as Fund Number 412 for use by the Trumbull County Dog Kennel. This fund is to be used to account for donations received for the construction of a new dog kennel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion under under what code is this one set up and what will happen if uh the this project doesn't come to fruition with the funds? Has anyone discussed that?
If the project doesn't come to fruition?
Yes.
If we don't build a dog barn.
There are donations and something happens. We have had no formal journal action or discussion at a meeting where action has taken place relative to construction. So this is the first time other than some conversation.
We have we have at our workshops.
You're more than welcome to attend in here. We've had many, many meetings in at the workshop about the dog barn.
Discussion is different than action and general action. So I what I'm saying is there has been no formal action taken, or there should have been nothing without.
This is the formal action right here. This is the formal action.
Okay, so under what code is this fund being set up? Does the auditor have that? The code, the revised code for donation fund? I'm just asking. Is is Alex looking it up?
I don't think she needs to look it up.
I I don't know. Is it fifty-seven?
Do you want to see what legislators voted on that code thirty years ago?
No, this is a fund for donations that we we've normally not seen.
Just vote no if you don't want to.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Voting on.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Um, because there is again for these next two items, we received nothing except for please put this on. Um, no, I'm assuming it's fifty-seven oh five point oh nine, but I don't know because they never sent anything with it. It's just this. No.
Item number eight is to establish establish the creation of the dog kennel dash loan proceeds to be known as Fund Number 413 for use by the Trumbull County Dog Kennel. This fund is to be used to account for loan proceeds received for the construction of a new dog kennel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And where where is any type of journal action with the commissioners intent to move forward on this? And how it's being?
We're simply creating a fund.
For the construction of something. Well, when was?
You can move money out of a fund if it doesn't happen.
I understand, but I I just think that the.
Are you saying you don't know? We've been trying to build a new dog kennel for the last year. This is all new to you? We've been we've been talking about this at every meeting for nine months now, something in regards to dog kennel. We get phone calls from the public about the status of dog kennel. You hear the responses. If you if you don't want to attend the meetings, you still hear the responses of what went on.
It's normally discussed at the workshop where there are nor no minutes taken, and there's been no formal.
Not true.
There's there are no minutes taken, and there's been no formal action or anything by the commissioners. It would just be appropriate, in my opinion, to have and transparent to have actually some journal action that we voted in agreement that we're moving.
No money is being spent. We're creating funds.
Okay.
You can move money from fund to fund if need be. I don't think you do.
We're getting our ducks in a row.
There's no money. There's no money spent.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Unreal.
Item number nine is to authorize the Board of Commissioners clerk to advertise for sealed bids for contract services for repair work of water and sewer lines for 2024 on a per call or as needed basis for the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department.
Motion to approve.
I'd like to make a modification.
I guess that would be a second.
A second.
Yes, I I'd like to make a motion contingent upon correcting my my name. I I I just talked to Scott Ferner about this before the meeting. There were some errors.
Explain. It's I'm I'm only voting on what I see here. What what are you explaining?
Did you read the accompanying paperwork?
Okay, and what are we missing?
Just I I'm asking that they corrected. Everyone at the engineer's office should know how to spell my name by now.
Which name, Michelle or Nikki?
Move on, please.
Final question.
I mean.
Let's just move on.
Okay, Mario.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Frenchco.
Yes, and I just want to make sure, Scott, will you make sure it's corrected?
Okay. I always I always make sure that your name spelled correctly in the legal notices.
Okay, well, it's in the proposal as well. So the proposal even had it. Thank you.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number ten is to accept the resignation of Mr. Benjamin Lowry from his position of laborer with the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department effective October 10th, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number eleven is to approve the personnel action for the employment of Mr. Garrett Snyder for the position of drafts person with the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department effective November 6th, 2023, pay range eight, zero years, twenty dollars and thirty-one cents per hour, and Mr. Snyder has passed a pre-employment drug screen and background check.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twelve is to approve change order number nine with Thomas Construction, Inc. For the Brookfield Wastewater Treatment Plant Capital Improvements Project, known as County Project Number Two Dash S Dash Thirteen located in the Trumbull County Combined Sanitary Sewer District Metropolitan Sub-District, Brookfield Township in the amount of thirty-three thousand, four hundred seventeen dollars and eighty-nine cents, revising the total contract amount to seventeen million, seven hundred forty-one thousand, ten dollars and forty cents.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Because the change orders were already completed. And look, I've been asking and saying, I mean, we're getting closer. It used to be nine, ten months after the change orders, they'd come to the board for approval. This is a little bit closer by a month or two. You're getting close, but can we get to the point, please? Where the change orders are approved by the commissioners before they're completed. It's just like any other contract.
No, it isn't.
We have to approve it before they get started on it.
No, it isn't.
It's an amendment to a contract.
It's a different animal because you have a plant that needs to keep working.
It is an amendment to a contract. It could have been put on a month ago when it was requested, and that's how it should be done.
It wouldn't have mattered. It would have need to have been done before the approval. It wouldn't have mattered.
Not not correct.
Okay.
We do that. You know, we have other departments to do it right. Kudos to Mike Swinski because they don't ever.
Not comparing apples to apples.
Okay, so anyway.
This is a treatment plant that needs to be in service.
Correctly.
Okay.
And um, we need to do things right.
Item number thirteen is to sign a one-year contract renewal commencing on December 10th, 2023 and ending on December 9th, 2024 with Dr. Philip Malvazi, D O L L C, to manage the inmate medical services at the Trumbull County Jail. This renewal is in accordance with the current contract in place between Dr. Philip Malvazi and the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, di- discussion. Uh, this didn't. This is another example of something that only came to me in in this form that everyone's reading. Everyone should know every time a contract is being placed on the agenda, what the cost of it is. There is no cost on here.
It's a renewal. It's the renewal of the same terms. You voted on the contract last year, and you could pull the journal entry and see what it was.
I can pull the journal, and that's what they're supposed. Thank you for doing this. It would have been better to have before. And where it says that it was recommended by the prosecutor's office, and I didn't see anything saying that the prosecutor's office recommended it.
Did you call the prosecutor's office?
It should be accompanying what is be if something is being it's our job, again, as those who oversee the contracting in Trumbull County to verify what we're being told. It says.
And it's our job to seek out the information if that's if it's there to be sought.
I I have been since I've started here requesting that the prosecutor's office approve these before we vote on them, and if this has occurred, they are they are to send us an email or or a copy of it that says approved.
Well, that's something you have to take up with a separately elected official, the prosecutor's office. But we can't we can't administratively tell the prosecutor what to do. He's separately elected.
No, they should be providing with us with something that says that this is a this is approved.
Guess what? If they're not, then we have to take it upon ourselves to call them and get the information.
Okay, okay. So in addition to that, we about a year, the year I started, because there were so many just autopilot auto renewal contracts, we voted on an item, a resolution that said that we wouldn't renew things without reviewing them. I believe it was ninety or sixty days in advance. So renewing this without reviewing it goes against what the Board of Commissioners have resolved to do and will probably be an audit finding. And in in addition to this, to blindly just renew a contract with someone who we already know has had deaths in their jail and medical neglect is probably not um probably not the best practice. You know, I think it would be good to open that up and have other vendors. So we not only not only.
We did. We had other. We had other bids.
That was. Okay, let let me explain here. Last year was the first year that they actually did
Not true.
and knew our request qualifications.
Just simply not true.
You're lying for your friend, it sounds like.
We did it three years prior to that, and we don't have to do it at all because it's professional services. But we did it to make sure we're getting market value and make sure we're getting a good deal.
So the cost of the jail services.
And what were the other bids that came in? What were the other bids that came in? Triple the triple the price of this contractor, triple the price. So you want to spend millions more dollars on something that, by the way, the latest the latest jail valuation, the medical was impeccable. There was not one finding for the medical. But go ahead.
Are you finished?
Yes.
You won't be interrupting?
Go right ahead.
When I started, they were just automatically renewing his contract without putting it out for bid at all. In fact, Matt Blair was the one sending over the renewal because while he was working at the county, he was also the attorney for the jail doctor who backs it over on his from his office, private office. Uh, then they decided in response to having complaints to actually go out to bid. They went out to bid, and they rigged they they had language in the RFQ to disqualify people so that basically that would be the only doctor who would be able to.
Explain that. How did we disqualify people?
You were done.
No, but you're saying we disqualified people. You have to clarify that. Well, at least clarify it. You're making bold claims here.
Anyone is able to read the RFP from RFQ from last year, and it disqualified people if they did not already work as a as a jail doctor. So anyone else who might have uh the ability to provide services by maybe having an onsite nurse practitioner instead of med techs who were not qualified, anyone else who have has medical experience was not able to bid because they made it so that only people who have previously been a jail doctor were able to be considered. That was their effort to make it look like they were trying to open it up, but in reality, they were keeping it uh putting it out in a fashion so that uh limited people were able to bid on it. And the contract, I believe, doubled. Unfortunately, no one in the public can see that right now. So I I'm ready to vote.
I I don't even know where to start with it, but.
Call the question.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Because of the reasons I stated, no.
Item number fourteen is to authorize change order number four for a no-cost time extension through November 30th, 2023 and a net reduction of eight thousand, two hundred twenty-five dollars in the contract with MJD Excavating, Inc. For the West Farmington Village Sanitary Lateral Assistance Program for LMI households benefiting in income-qualified owner-occupied households and the West Farmington Sanitary Sewer Household Connections Project funded through the Project Year 2021 Community Development Block Grant Allocation Program, BF211CS dash one, and the Project Year 2022 Home Sewage Treatment Reserve Program and authorize the President Danny Malloy to sign O E P A change order form.
Motion to authorize to approve authorizing the change order number four for MJD Excavating.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number fifteen is to authorize the Trumbull County Planning Commission to request price proposals for three of Trumbull County's licensed home sewage treatment systems, H. for three of Trumbull County's licensed home sewage treatment systems, H S T S installers, for two owner-occupied households qualified to receive financial assistance through the county's H S T S Reserve Program, funded through the project year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, O E P A Water Pollution Control Loan Fund Principal Forgiveness Program. Request for price proposal packets must be returned intact in a sealed envelope, marked twenty twenty-two H S T S Reserve Program to the attention of the Clerk of Commissioners no later than three P M on Tuesday, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve authorizing the Trumbull County Planning Commission to request price, price proposals for the H S T S program.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Item number sixteen is to accept the resignation of Matthew Yalishny from his position of groundskeeper with Trumbull County Building Maintenance Department effective October tenth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number seventeen is to authorize expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Act Funds dash United Way. And Commissioners, if you'd go to the next page, please. Whereas United Way has developed programming directly in response to the lost instructional time that resulted from the pandemic, and whereas the United Way has requested funding in the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to assist in providing programming to schools in Trumbull County, which are located outside of municipalities specifically to provide the following programming, kindergarten readiness, social, emotional, and academic development, and enrichment and STEM resource. And whereas the county has determined that the United Way is presumed harmed by the pandemic, has demonstrated economic harm, and has developed a program specifically to respond to the harm and lost instructional time resulting from the pandemic, and the grant request is reasonable response of the harm, and therefore, the county has determined that in the judgment of the board, the following grant qualifies as a type of project which will respond to and mitigate the adverse economic effects of the pandemic, which consists of the following. A one-time grant to United Way of Trumbull County to be used for kindergarten readiness, social, emotional, and academic development, and enrichment and STEM resource as set forth in the grant agreement attached here to is Exhibit A.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
No.
Okay, and item number eighteen goes along with that to enter into an agreement between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and the United Way of Trumbull County, as approved by ARPA Legal Counsel for United Way to provide kindergarten readiness, social, emotional, and academic development, and enrichment and STEM resource. And the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners allocates the sum of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to United Way.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
No.
Can I ask why you want to vote no to United Way? That's like the most un-American thing I've ever heard.
Actually, yeah, I'll, I'll respond to that, even though it's out of the, the meeting order. They, they came with a different response. They knew how to tailor their response in order to get money for their administration, their programs that they're already planning and that they would be doing even without, without what we're doing. They're, they, they all, they go with their hands out to where money sources are. Uh, and I believe that the money could be better spent on infrastructure in the county. So that's it. Thank you for asking that.
Not on kindergarten kids.
Okay, they'd be doing it anyway. All right.
They'd be doing it with the generosity of groups like us and individuals that donate to the United Way. It's one of the most recognized nonprofits. It is not. I'm sorry. They need, they need to run a nonprofit, unfortunately. Yes, they do.
The, the, you're saying it's not going to administration?
It may be going to admin fees, just like other nonprofit, just like other nonprofits you voted for going to admin fee.
No, they're going to bricks and mortar, like the Upton House to the roof to actual infrastructure.
Not all of them, not all of them, not all of them.
In the workshop, I specifically asked the Executive Director of United Way about admin, said I didn't want anybody to go to admin.
Okay.
They had a breakdown of where the money was going, and admin was not in any of them. So she did answer the question when it was asked.
Okay.
Item number nineteen is authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Act Funds, Johnson Township. Commissioners, if you'd go to the next page, please. Whereas the population of Johnston Township falls within low to moderate income within the meaning of the final role, and therefore is presumed to have been adversely impacted by the pandemic. And whereas Johnston Township seeks to pave the paths in the township's Northern Cemetery to serve as walking paths due to the lack of walking paths in the township. And whereas the proposed walking paths will provide improved green space, outdoor activity, and pedestrian safety. And whereas the county has determined that Johnston Township has demonstrated that improvement of the proposed walking paths will assist in responding to the adverse impact of the public health emergency, and therefore, the county has determined that in the judgment of the board, the following grant qualifies as a type of project which will respond to and mitigate the adverse economic effects of the pandemic, which consists of the following: a one-time grant to Johnston Township in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, ninety-nine dollars to be used toward the paving of the walking paths in Johnston Township Northern Cemetery to provide safe spaces for pedestrian walking and exercise.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Okay, then item twenty goes along with that to enter into an agreement between the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners and Johnston Township, as approved by ARPA Legal Counsel for Johnston Township to pave walking paths in the Johnston Township Northern Cemetery to provide space for paved walking paths for pedestrians to walk safely and exercise. And the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners allocates the sum of twenty-seven thousand, ninety-nine dollars to Johnston Township.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Ask why I support this one? Exercise. Yes.
Item number twenty-one, authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Act Funds, Healthy Hearts and Paws Project. And Commissioners, on the next page, whereas the Hearts and Paws Shelter is located in a Q C T and provides temporary care and shelter for stray animals in the county. And whereas Hearts and Paws has requested funding in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to assist in expansion of its animal shelter, which is necessary as a direct result of the rapid influx of stray animals in need of care due to the onset of the COVID-nineteen pandemic as residents have become unable to care for their pets due to the cost, health conditions, or relocating. And whereas the county has determined that Hearts, Hearts and Paws has demonstrated that it has experienced an adverse economic impact as a direct result of the pandemic, and the county has therefore determined that in the judgment of the board, the following grant qualifies as a type of project which will respond to and mitigate the adverse economic effects of the pandemic, which consists of the following: a one-time grant to Healthy Hearts and Paws Project in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to be used toward the expansion of the animal shelter facility as set forth in the grant agreement attached here to as Exhibit A.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
And item twenty-two goes along with that to enter into an agreement between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and the He- Healthy Hearts and Paws Project, as approved by ARPA Legal Counsel for Hearts and Paws to expand their animal shelter facility for the temporary placement of dogs and cats. And the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners allocates the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars to Healthy Hearts and Paws.
Motion to approve entering agreement between the Board of Commissioners and Healthy Hearts and Paws.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. President, point of personal privilege, can you point that fan closer to you, please? It's blowing right on me. It's hot air blowing right on me. You didn't move it, actually, but can you just turn it?
I did.
Okay.
You just pushed it back. You didn't turn it at all.
Okay.
Just point it towards you.
It used to be under here. Again, let me.
I know, but what does it matter? It's just right here.
I used to keep things under here, but they built these dividers, so I can no longer put my hand under here.
You can.
Because I, the, these can't go underneath, so.
But why are you pointing that at my face?
I need it for my hands, so that's why.
I know, but you need to point it towards you. I don't need it at all.
Okay, well, do you want to remove these?
Plus, there's a big old radiator here next to me that's at like ninety degrees melting me over here.
I mean, how many heaters do you need?
I, I, I was fine until you guys decided to build this and, and, and freeze the thermostat, so.
The thermostat is at room temperature.
Okay.
Item number twenty-three is to concur with the county engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the companies listed, and that's Dominion East, Ohio, and Kovak Excavating, Inc.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number twenty-four is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special annual supplier fleet permit requested by the company listed, and that's X P O Logistics, Inc.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number twenty-five is to concur with the county engineer to grant the quarterly operating fleet permit requested by the company listed, and that's J M Logging and Lumber.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number twenty-six is to award the only bid as submitted by Trinity Service Group, Inc. For food service management consulting services, provide product, product for meals, menu, and food preparation consulting for the Trumbull County Adult Justice Center, and enter into a contract with Trinity Service Group, Inc. for said food services. Contract terms shall be effective immediately commencing October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three through October eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, with the option that the contract may be extended by mutual agreement for a term of up to two one-year extensions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Because I didn't receive anything that says that the prosecutor's office actually approved it. I have no verification that the bid went out, was, was advertised uh, correctly, and there, and there's only one respond, response. And I didn't get a copy of the contract that we're reviewing to approve until I arrived this morning. I have to vote no.
Item number twenty-seven is a routine liquor permit. It's a new permit for Jay Asba, L L C, doing businesses Hampton Inn, Youngstown North.
Uh, motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
All right, that concludes our regular agenda items. Do you have anything of note from the board?
Um, I do. What, one of the things that I wanted to bring up, and I, I think it's important with people who are who are going to be voting on taxes in November, that they know already what their tax, their property tax liability will be next year. And I would like to, I've had a lot of people reach out and say, are we going to be sent? We know that everything's going up. We know that our taxes are going to go up. Can, can someone please send us as soon as possible what their taxes will be so that they can bear that in mind while they're making their decision on voting for tax levies? And I would, I'm hoping that that will go out sooner ahead of this, you know, as soon as possible, so the people can plan for it because it's going to be something, and a lot of people have said that they're going to have to plan financially for the increase as well, and they don't want to find out, you know, a month or two before, two months before it's due. And then, uh, whether or not the new auditor will do that, it doesn't seem like they will, but. And then the other thing that I wanted to update the board on is, uh, we had a meet, I had a very productive meeting yesterday.
And let's go back to the first part because we have, like, you have two separate issues. The auditor wants to speak on behalf of your first questions. Let's finish that one first before we get to your second.
First of all, I'm not sure how someone who is, um, owns a lot of property in the, in, in this county, and is a grown-up woman, doesn't understand that the tax bills don't come from the auditor. Do you, have you looked at your tax bills? Do you know whose name is on the tax bill? Do you? Is my name on the tax bill, or was Adrian Viviano's name on the tax bill? No. Treasurer Lamencusar. There's also a process, excuse me, excuse me, I'm speaking now, I'm speaking now. There's also a process.
Food lady.
I'm telling you the truth. I'm explaining something. You, you keep saying.
Is our auditor gonna sell us?
That you keep saying that the auditor sends out.
Doing the county tour all over the place, talking about how your taxes are going up. At least you should be letting people know, you have the website. You, 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 it's yours. It's, it's online to see, to see these things.
Values. Yeah, first of all, I do not set the taxes, as you're well aware.
Okay. Alls I'm saying is there are people who are going to be in dire situations, and they also are, you know, if they have enough time, they might need to budget in order to hire someone to help them fight their tax increase through the, through the appeal process. And they are getting ready to vote on other financial, things that are of financial impact to them. I'm sorry if you don't care about people's finances in Trumbull County, but it's true, and I, I know that they're concerned over this. If there's something that you can do in conjunction with whoever to make sure while you're going around telling people it's not my fault that they're going up, that you could at least like help them to be better prepared because I'm getting a lot of calls.
Done that by releasing the values, and perhaps we need to build, budget some money to build a grandstand in here, but.
Do you think you're cute? Let's, let's, this is cute. Let's just.
I think that you have a lot of, are, are trying really hard to get elected next year, is what I think. And, but, but let me explain something, first of all. I don't set the taxes. Also, the values are still tentative. We cannot set the taxes until the values are finalized. The state applies, figures out all these effective rates. That's not done within the auditor's office. We cannot send out bills right this minute. We can't do that until all of that is accomplished. In addition to that, there's pending legislation in Columbus to make changes that may change these values. It is expensive to send out tax bills. We can't do that early. We can't do that. And I am not the person that sends out tax bills. What I can do is give people as much information as I can, which is those tentative values. When it comes to voting on levies, new levies, I can explain how much more that will cost, but I can't explain how much, what their taxes are going to be with, with the new values until that. A lot of the taxes are dependent upon the value of the whole taxing district. That is apt to change. I can't make those calls. I can give ideas, and I can try to do that, but you know, the first time I say this, your taxes are going to be X, and they're Y, somebody's going to say, oh, you said this. Too many variables, and I've explained them.
Okay.
And again, the treasurer sends out the tax bills. I don't.
Okay. I just hope that people aren't, we don't come into a wave of foreclosures and, and things like that.
We need to talk to state legislatures and the governor's office about that. It has nothing to do with anyone in county government. Nothing.
People need to be able to plan. They don't, yeah, so.
Talk to our state representatives and our state senator if they have a problem with that.
No, that I'll just tell everyone that's been contacting me to call the new auditor. Um, so the other.
She'll say the same thing. It's not her job.
Okay, I mean, but that's where the maybe she can have someone work with them and explain to them what it looks like they might be or something like that, so that they're not.
They will do that.
People who are.
They will do that if you let them contact the office.
Great. Okay, that's what I just got done saying.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Forward the calls to the auditor's office. I mean, it's not.
So yesterday I had, as we were talking about before and over the last year, since I've been here and I found out in January, and I don't want interrupted, from in January of twenty twenty-two, it came to my attention that there is an a road that was not properly dedicated and had been interfering with development over for since twenty fourteen, the Board of Commissioners was made aware of it.
Since nineteen seventy-eight.
No, since twenty fourteen.
Since nineteen seventy-eight, it was accepted code by the county. Since nineteen seventy-eight, get the facts right. Thank you. We've been collecting the gas tax on that road. It's been on all our county map.
I know it's a.
You can't sit here and spew out lies. I'm sorry.
Talk, and that and so it was twenty fourteen that it became.
Misinformation.
That it I I that I've got all the documents. So in twenty fourteen is whenever it came to the board's attention. I wasn't here. Soon as it came to my attention, I called a meeting, wanted to bring together people for the purpose of making sure that the road was properly dedicated, that everything was done so that we could move forward with development. Mercy Health was interested in that property. And I'm glad they were as opposed to where they were originally looking because the traffic would have been horrible, and there would have been wetlands, and there was a lot of moving pieces and characters being moved to the EPA in order to, you know, try to allow something that shouldn't have happened, happened. Fortunately.
Just a point of note, point of note, you said wetlands at the old place? The new place is in the middle of one of the largest Canada goose migration routes in North America.
Okay.
So go ahead.
Okay, fortunately, they are no longer interested in that site. It's Mercy Health, and they are only interested in the Chan- the Champion Township area. Last year, when it came to my attention, I originally suggested that we should be looking at doing a joint economic development district and that the county should have been involved. Last year, every time I I brought that up to be put on the agenda, it was voted down. The Morrow kept saying that it was not not, we were not, we should not be involved because it only involved other entities without understanding that services that we were providing there were, you know, there's water, there's sewer, there's also, there's also a road, and if that road does end up getting dedicated, when it gets dedicated, it could possibly be a township road or a county road. The improvements that are preliminary relative to to making that area suitable for hospital development on that road are already estimated to be one point two million dollars. There are other entities that were interested in contributing because after the traffic study was done, it was identified that the a lot of the impact was going to be from the hospital, so they were going to chip into some of those costs. Right now, we could be in so much of a better place and and so much further down the road had my board actually brought on someone who specialized in working with joint economic development districts instead of just scoffing and mocking me like like normal. But fortunately, I had a productive meeting with attorney Tom Wilson, who's the board's attorney, with engineer, deputy engineer, and their counsel, Tom Nader, and they recognize that we need to move forward on this and bring in someone else who has that level of expertise. There are issues with the with the road being serviced, you know, is it going to be Trumbull County doing it? There's issues with the fire because Champion wouldn't be able to provide the type of truck that possibly Warren has, and it arguably might be closer if they use their Parkman Road to, you know, service that area. So I I just believe it's critically important, and I think that all the other parties agree that we need to look at doing something jointly and then contributing funds together to help to help to improve that area to make it development friendly. The other thing is, is the Transportation Improvement District. If if we get our stuff to get, if they get their stuff together in time, we'll be able to have an application for, we'll be able to have an application for the road improvements there. So the TID, when they accept the applications, one of the things that they look at when they're ranking them is cooperation. So if you have public-private partnership as well as multiple entities, like a city and a county and a private developer all working toward improving that, then that would be a perfect project because a JED is automatically going to get the most points when they're evaluating the TID applications for funding. So that's why I I believe it's it's a very important, the Larchmont project, if if everything goes quickly and smoothly, which I don't think that it will, would have been a good one, but so will that. That will be an ideal project and you know, missed unfortunately also, since I was trying to hire someone who who was an APA certified attorney or someone who specialized in planning and JEDs, and my board shot that down last year, they chose a very good attorney, but not one who specialized in that. His name is Tom Wilson. They hired him last fall, early last fall. He didn't even get contacted by our office, I found, until recently. So a few months ago.
Not true.
Uh, he said so in a in a in a meeting. The Planning Commission reached out to him a few months ago, and then so did you when you realized that it wasn't after you contacted Tom Nader.
Not true.
So at any rate, I don't think our attorney is going to be lying.
Can we finish up, please?
So I think that the basically the Mercy Health Campus is project is moving forward the proper way. It was it was just kind of out there.
How did, let me ask you one question. I don't even know. How did, you're convoluting and muddying these waters beyond all.
As a commissioner, I'm trying to figure out, how do we go from a road dedication to you negotiating a JED on behalf of the board with no talks with your board members? Where did that come from?
Okay, so I I originally had the notion that it was a good idea to do, and that was brought from.
Oh, you thought it was a good idea, so you just single-handedly scheduled meetings and started planning and getting community cooperation without bringing up.
Jets are between a city and a township, not a county.
We have services, okay.
We have services, but what we have to do, we can't lose our eye on the prize is dedicating this road. We have been through a lot of convoluted political mess.
Should have done it in two thousand and fourteen, Morrow. You're, I'm not done.
Finish up, please.
So in two thousand and fourteen is when you should have been working on that, okay, because it would have been done already, and they probably would have been able to develop to develop over there before before there became a problem with.
The road had nothing to do with the development.
Yes, it did.
Construction cost and the cost of new construction. Please, please, I know you want to score political points, but please let's stay on topic. And first of all.
It was not, it was not a common law dedication. That's not, that's not.
You have five minutes to ramble on and lie. Can I please talk?
No, I want to explain something that you're not familiar with. So even if it was in in the in the roads and there were taxes, that only covers the actual pavement, the paved portion. In order to be able to have secure bonds and loans, you actually and to develop, there's going to, you have to have the rest of the area for road widening, additional turn lanes and all the other things that make an area appropriate for development, and none of that could have occurred until it was formally dedicated, and this is now twenty twenty-two, and it's been a problem since twenty fourteen. I've been trying to do this since I found out about it.
You have not been trying to do this.
I haven't heard a word to you in eight months, nine months, ten months.
And hire an attorney on behalf of a city and a township when they need to enter into a jet.
It's an appropriate, so it's an appropriate attorney whenever all these things are coming into play. Either way, they're moving, they're moving for, they're moving forward with it, and it was already, what I said was already discussed because I have a working relationship with our county engineer, and he brought that.
Of course you do.
Yes, someone needs to. So so that was already brought to the entities, the political subdivisions, and it's my understanding that it was that was well received.
In February of twenty-two, you were arguing that this road doesn't need a formal dedication. The common law dedication would suffice. You're arguing with Bill Danzel on that point. I'll bring you that email. Second of all, the dedication to this road is going to be very simple. It's been convoluted by you trying to insert yourself into into city and township business. If they're going to enter into.
Conflicted.
Can I please?
You are conflicted.
You just said you just found out. You just found out what?
No.
You just said you just found out. You started to say that.
Yeah, last, so you are conflicted. Do we need to get into all the things that you have done that are you're a commissioner, you're supposed to be working for the county. This involves an annexation where your brother is a law director, just as you have tried to manipulate the nine-one-one situation by giving them a heads up and texting your brother and saying, hey, Patty Goldner is going to come in and destroy you. I've got all your text messages to discovery. You you need to be ethical. I am tired of you you inserting yourself into matters where you're conflicted.
Yeah, we're still going to stay on track here. This is this is campaign season.
I'll bring those texts. I'll bring your.
Bring them all in.
On discovery, yeah.
Bring them all in. What I'm saying is the road dedication is.
You are more interested in working with your brother. No, you you really shouldn't even be speaking on this because you are conflicted. You you abstained from voting and discussing it last year, and now you're acting like you have the ability to do that.
Talking about a quarter of half a million, half a billion dollar investment here, and you want to drag your feet and talk about a jet. What we need to do, yes, it is. You keep bringing up this jet. We don't even have a business yet.
Okay, let me just say.
To incorporate a jet.
We'll be getting a letter of update from the attorney soon.
Our attorney that works for the three of us.
Yeah, because.
I have the.
That we're paying to solve it.
Right here, I have.
Should we, should we make the check out to you or to the attorney?
Because he has not been even notified until recently. Okay.
It's going to be a very simple dedication. It doesn't even have to go through subdivision regulations, okay? This is going to be on the agenda, which it should have been a long time ago, and voted on in a public meeting. That's it, folks. That's it. She wants to muddy the waters for political purposes.
That's not true. It's needs, there is some debate between the attorneys, and they're working that out.
We're paying for two attorneys for this.
We are going to take our attorneys advice. This is a road, this is a road that has been accepted into the county since nineteen seventy-eight that we've accepted the revenue on.
No idea what you're talking about.
Nineteen seventy-eight, right here. The Trumbull County Commissioners record record for the week beginning ten nine nineteen seventy-eight confirms their, can I please speak? Confirms their acceptance of educational highway, part of the county road system on the recommendation of the county engineer's office. That's in nineteen seventy-eight. You tell me who's been taking care of that road for forty years, then? Who is it?
If that's the case.
Who's been taking care of the road?
Saying that everything was done correctly, then there wouldn't be a a matter to resolve right now.
I'm not saying it's not done correctly, but it's been taken care of.
No, it hasn't.
And it's part of the county map, and it's on the, and we collect the gas tax money.
Finally taking care of it now.
Because you've dragged your feet with this jet stuff.
Because we had an attorney that you didn't even know.
I'm not using educational highway as a bargaining chip.
You called the wrong. You didn't even know who you called Tom Nader first, not even knowing who your attorney was.
We're making accusations here. This is.
It's true. Ask him. He'll he'll bring him in here. So you had no idea who the attorney was. We hired someone, and no one even contacted him until the next year.
You contacted our attorney? Just yesterday, right?
No.
When when did you contact him?
I tried to have a formal meeting and and.
When, when you tried, you tried.
Contacted the attorney yesterday, yesterday.
Not true.
Yeah. But she wants to say she's champion.
They had a meeting. We tried to have a public.
It's political theater, folks.
You were too embarrassed. You were probably too embarrassed to sit at a public meeting, so I had one. I had a meeting because you didn't want to have a public meeting. Neither of you wanted to know what was going on.
I didn't know anything about it.
There are issues.
We can share it with the press.
Fisher, when you close your eyes, you touch your face, move your hair, that's a tell. That's a tell you're getting ready to lie on something. Everybody sees it. Everyone knows it. Here you go again. I mean, you're the worst poker player in the world. You're grandstanding for votes. This is BS. Let's move on.
You are, there are.
You don't understand how bad you're digging a hole for yourself in public opinion.
There are two.
You're you're thirty people on Facebook like what you're saying, and you're rooting rah rah rah. But the world is looking at it saying.
What a Jerry Springer episode.
To remove yourself from your seat, and this has nothing to do, you do not insult people as the board chair. Turn it over.
You're you're the one insulting individuals, Commissioner.
There are two different attorneys involved in this, and what you're saying is is not exactly accurate. There's.
So you don't want to take the advice of our attorney. You want to take the advice of the engineer's attorney. Is that what you're saying on the record?
The attorney want, our attorney wants to make sure that he's not missing anything, and so they're working together now.
Yesterday, and he stands by what he wrote me, and I will share it with the press.
Okay. They're working.
He stopped convoluting and making things up. The board should be acting on this, and you're standing in the way of it, just as you stand in the way of all the obstruction that you do every week on this agenda.
The only one who actually worked.
Commissioner, you're oh for two right now. Would you like a third thing? Is there anything else you'd like to bring up?
One who tried to resolve this last year, there is a whole history of every meeting.
Solving it would be dedicating the road.
And you've been sitting here on it for since you took office, so.
For three years.
No.
Yes.
No, I actually tried to resolve it.
With what, a jet? With a business that doesn't exist there?
No, that's not what I said.
Ridiculous.
But with properly.
Do we have anything else for the goods on that?
Be developed. Yes, I'd like to make a motion from the floor again, because I did hear recently that that there is, and this is what I said when I first took office and when I was on senior levy. If we do not join WR TA, there's going, and they are not picking up those additional rides for senior citizens, there's going to be a property, a need to increase the senior levy shortly because Diane came in and told the Board of Commissioners a while ago, and then she again told the Commissioners, I believe it was last week or something like that. So also, I am aware that Board of DD over the course of so many years is also going to have to do an increase in their property taxes, their levy for their population, because they can't they can't afford the transportation aspect of their services. So by joining WR TA, you'd be alleviating the stress on the senior levy and the
And raising taxes.
He's a tax on everybody else in the county.
Don't leave that part out because that's very important.
They're so predictable. You're like a NASCAR. You got the stickers of all your sponsors all over you, one after another, every meeting, you got to throw those names out. You got to make sure you hit your list. We have a meeting today with WR TA, the Commissioner Commissioner Cantalamaesa is going to attend. I have a meeting with Dean Harris and Jim Kinnick tomorrow, and this is something we're all working on. We're not going to have it force-fed down our throats. We brought that up before.
It's been, it's been years.
We're going to look for the best solution.
We've been aware, the Board of Commissioners has dropped the ball, not me, because I've been trying to do to do.
No, you want to overpay for a seven million dollar system. That's what you want to do.
You just got that warning.
Seven million dollars every year on a transportation.
There's a difference between, there is absolutely.
Want to spend seven million dollars on transportation or other economic development?
It's not us spending. It's first of all, no one trusts, no one trusts Trumbull County to administer transit. That's A. Secondly, you got someone that you're paying a hundred and what, fifty thousand dollars a year?
We have to administer.
To administer transportation, and there is no transit.
Just warn people about an increase of three hundred dollars or more in their property taxes, but you want to, you want to talk about
Raising their sales.
WR TA and charging everybody a thousand dollars more in their sales tax for their daily goods they buy every day.
You have no idea how that works. So if a person spends a thousand dollars a month, their annual expense might be thirty bucks.
No, no, when you raise, when you raise things a quarter percent like you want to, that is adding a thousand dollars to every citizen in the county on what they pay in sales tax a year.
That's not, do some math, you.
And we did the math. That's the math.
It depends on how much you spell or you spend.
We were based on what people spent over the last three years. There'd be a thousand dollars more per person in sales tax.
Every year.
Well, it's controllable as opposed to property taxes.
It's controllable. They just stop buying stuff. They sit home and they don't buy necessities because taxes are too high.
Property, so you.
They go outside the county and buy a car where sales tax is less.
You'd rather increase property taxes for everyone.
We're not increasing anything. State Legislature is reassessing our property.
Be quiet. Go smoke your cigars or something. Seriously, don't come in here and attack from the back. This is ridiculous. Can you do something?
Don't address the crowd like that. Dress the chair.
It's totally unacceptable for people to just shout out like that. You're going to need their name to interrupting like that. Control the crowd. You're the president of the board.
Yeah, well, don't engage the crowd. Talk to me.
No. No, so.
Take them on as if they're going to have a chance to respond.
Show up for one meeting and they somehow think they know county business for the last five.
Commissioner shows up one day a week and she thinks she knows everything that's going on in the county.
This is.
Come over one day, she's here.
Been something going on and we've been aware of for years. We do not have enough money to continue the senior services.
Yes, we do.
To senior levy, um.
That's up to us. We don't want to increase it.
Okay. And then people will get their transportation cut. So what I'm saying is this has been something that we have known about four years, known, known that WR TA was going to stop. We've known that there's going to be a need to increase senior levy just to, just to care for senior citizens.
Senior population. That's.
And those levies pass 80, 20. So everyone's going to go out and they're going to pass those. And every, and there's going to be a property tax increase, but if people like, it's just, people would rather.
Let's add a sales tax on top of it. Why not?
Writing on the wall, but if you don't want to do that, I mean, I hate being the one that always says, I told you so, but.
You're not advocating for this.
You love being the one to say, I told you so. You live for the fact to be the one to say, I got you. I told you so. That's your life's motive.
I try to prevent it, just like I, just like I made sure that we got the Yankee Lake project in when he missed the deadline, just like I'm.
What?
Well, you missed it. No, no.
Stay on task.
The diverging diamond.
Gary, Gary, no need on this yet. We're not even going to wade into this cesspool that she's starting here. It's not even worth your time.
No one knew about that until three months before.
Let's move. Do you have anything good to say? And I want to, I want to take this time for the second too, apologize for the mayor for being here and having to witness this. I know you've seen some crazy things, but welcome to crazy. Anyone from the board have anything else positive for the good of Trumbull County?
Motion to join WR.
And the motion died within a lack of a second. And it will die again and again and again, as long as you are the cheerleader. Anyone from the public have anything to say?
Cheerleader.
Yes, sir. Floor is yours. When you hit them, when you approach the mic as usual, name and where you're from for the record, please.
My name is Dennis Blank. My name is President Warren. And I'm here today representing the Fund for Warren's Future, uh, which is a public partnership. Welcome. Public private partnership, uh, representing both the business community and the city of Warren. The board is pimping going, pimping. Third gentleman representing the business community, which is over, we have members of more than 50 individuals and institutions.
How are we doing there? Good enough? You don't want me to start?
I heard you. I, I heard you.
Okay. Uh, with your, so with your indulgence, I have a, a brief presentation here. I'd, I'd like to walk you through quickly. Thank you. Thank you, sir. So the fund was formed about eight years ago with the goal of transforming Warren in some meaningful way. Which leads to the title of this presentation, Making Warren the Capital of the Voltage Valley, which we believe will not only be great for Warren, it'll be great for all of Trumbull County. And I'd just like to walk you quickly through how we got to where we are, what, and what we've got proposed. Uh, we began with looking with, uh, looking at the literature of what has worked in other places. There were three things that were very obvious from, uh, efforts made in similar cities to the size and nature of, of Warren. They were first and foremost to create a very strong downtown environment that was appealing in a regional way for entertainment and dining and, and other forms of recreation. Just as important was to take advantage of whatever waterfront was available in the community to make it a source of economic development. And the third was to form strong public private partnerships, which we had already done. If you'll flip, uh, to the title, uh, and, uh, the environment, uh, we, you know, nothing takes place in a vacuum. We looked at what was going on in the city and the region, uh, when we began. Some of the big things were, uh, the availability of the RG Steel property, the arrival of Foxconn and Ultium. All the blight remediation done, uh, via the land bank and Trumbull Neighborhood Partnership. We were already seeing some organic growth downtown. Uh, there were large tracts of land available on the peninsula in Warren. And, uh, uh, the, uh, there was already a statewide effort underway, uh, to, uh, remove all the dams from the Mahoning River to make it a more navigable and, and accessible, uh, recreational feature for the community. Next page to basic facts that also played a role in here. It was clear that there was a transformation taking place in the automotive industry unlike anything in the last hundred years with the, the move to electronic vehicles. Uh, it was pretty clear that Warren itself was not going to be the site of, uh, these factories due to a lack of, uh, spaces big enough and, and the kinds of access that modern factories look for. So we knew we were going to have to do something in the community itself to take advantage of what we already had available. And, uh, to make it a place that people wanted to both live and recreate. So our assets, uh, was a strong and urban, diverse community, uh, that's going to appeal to, uh, people that, uh, are going to work for these, the Ultiums and, and Foxcons of the world. These are people who are not only coming from out of this immediate area, in many cases, they're coming from out of the country, from completely different cultures where, uh, having a, an urban environment is going to be a, a more appealing, uh, opportunity for them. We've got an accessible, walkable downtown. We've got great educational opportunities. We've got golf courses. We've got affordable housing, housing. If we flip what we need to do, uh, we needed to add more modern multifamily properties, especially adjacent to downtown. And, uh, in more affordable, uh, uh, and solid neighborhoods, the Garden District being one that we were particularly interested in, which was maybe not quite ready for prime time. It's a bit in the transition stage, but has a lot of things going for it. It was also fortunately, there's been a lot of momentum in other areas. We had nothing to do with any of these three things here, but I think they play a, a role in what we're trying to do. Uh, the, uh, the addition, uh, to Harding High School is going to be something that people will envy from in a multi-state area. It's really a spectacular thing that's going up there with the, uh, uh, Health and Recreation, or Health and Wellness Center. Your next door neighbor, of course, has already announced plans for a $40 million renovation that'll include, uh, uh, market rate housing, uh, a significant amount of market rate housing. And then we've got a, a development on the west side, the first, uh, development on the west side in many, many years. Uh, in the old Western Reserve West Lawn area that, uh, where the initial, this is just the starting point is a $10 million, 100,000 square foot building, and it could be many times that if, if things goes, we hope. So the slide creating the future, uh, the Peninsula Project. Uh, we can only talk about a little bit. It's a private development. Uh, it is, we operate, even the mayor operates under a non-disclosure. Uh, to go beyond what we, we can say here, but this is a $150 million proposed mixed use development that will include more than 200 housing units, uh, with river views and river access, retail space with a twist on the mud, on the food court concept that would be a fun addition to downtown, uh, more than 100,000 square feet of office and retail space. A traditional hotel, a long-term hotel, as I think.
In the gateway to Warren's. I'm going to just keep going. This is much, much more than a single project that we have in mind. Trying to create, uh, the Warren. And the voltage valley is going to require more than just replacing. It's going to require giving them reason to come to town. And so the city of Warren is already announced as part of this.
Uh, parts that run through the center of town in the, uh, along the river, Perkins, Moaning Side, Packard. And to expand on a program that we began working with the Nature Conservancy a number of years ago to eradicate uh, invasive species from the river banks to make the rivers more accessible. Uh, in addition, uh, we, we are, uh, you, you'll be getting an invitation very soon from MS Consultants and, uh, Eastgate to attend, uh, a presentation on, uh, the concept of a riffle park on the river uh, adjacent to the Warren City Parks that, uh, has been done in a handful of communities, uh, nationwide. Uh, prior to us and had been strong economic development, uh, incentives. The Garden District, we think is a critical part of this. Uh, we'll come to a quick, uh, map, uh, not that you necessarily need it, but you know, the Garden District is just very strategically located. It's in the heart of the city and the dead center of the city. It's immediately adjacent to the high school, the parks and, and downtown. And it's a, in a transitional state. So there, there are two kinds of reasons to support it. One, because it's a great opportunity. It's a beautiful, old, walkable neighborhood that still has a very, uh, appealing sort of housing stock for certain kinds of people, uh, that, uh, uh, like that kind of thing. And then the other is a more defensive reason. Uh, if we don't strengthen, uh, the core of the city while doing these other things, we run the risk of, of jeopardizing the good we're doing. So creating the future, the big picture, what we think, all these things together, uh, created, uh, something that will be desirable to the new kind of worker that's going to be, uh, the high-tech kind of, uh, professional people that are going to be required to drive the, uh, 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 Voltage Valley, uh, industries. Uh, these, uh, opportunities that we're trying to create will be geared to both, uh, middle class and, and working class folks. Uh, we will create a destination out of our, uh, uh, status, out of our parks. Uh, and we will, uh, create a bridge, uh, between the west and east sides of Warren, giving, giving something to kind of pull the city together. So most of, this is all together, we think there's probably 180-ish million dollars worth of investment required to this. Most of that is going to be private money, but we are exploring every possibility to, uh, for public support of this. Uh, we are extremely hopeful, uh, of, of, um, being a major recipient of Appalachia Community Grant, uh, money. Uh, Mr. Payavlos and Mr. Cavelli would be here today, uh, except they're with Lieutenant Governor Husted, uh, showing him around, uh, the, some of these areas that we've been talking about in the presentation. Uh, we will, we have, uh, uh, we are hopeful of receiving 10, 20 million dollars possibly out of this, uh, Appalachia Community Grant Program, and we're doing everything in our power, uh, to, uh, to use whatever resources we have to, to endure ourselves to the powers that be at the state and in Eastgate to make that a reality. Then the maps, we close with, uh, the, the big picture, the 30,000 foot, uh, and then the 300 foot view. Uh, everything we're talking about really runs down the core of the city of Warren. And, uh, and just like with, uh, humans, you know, strengthening your core is the first step you've got to make if you want a healthy body. And, uh, we, uh, believe that these projects will, will do that, but that they will also create the kind of, uh, uh, appeal that will bring, uh, Warren closer to the, uh, industries from the, this Voltage Valley transformation that, uh, are coming into our, our area regardless of where they are. And that will be good, you know, if, 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 if Warren doesn't win out in this, it's not like Cortland's going to win the title for, uh, Capitol. It's going to be in some other county. I think we probably all could guess which one. Where we believe this is going to be a very strong effort for the county as well as for the city. And we will be asking and on the closing page, we will be making a request of the county for, uh, $2 million in ARP funding. Uh, we will be making a similar additional request to the city of Warren, although the city of Warren has already committed more than that amount in ARP funding. We'll be going for some additional funding, uh, ARP. That's our story. Happy to answer any questions if you have them, but. No, thank you.
Did you get an application in already before the deadline?
Uh, we are, we, we have not completed our application. We are at a very critical stage, I would say right now, figuring out what's the right thing to ask for to get the, uh, the incentives right for the private investment, you know, the, the more we can do on the public front, the greater our chances of securing the private investment that we need. We're in the final steps of assessing that now. I believe within the, we'll be able to spot in more detail.
You spoke originally, you had a meeting with the other two or someone had a meeting? The, the whole Fund for Warren's Future had a meeting with each of them individually?
Uh, no, we did not actually. We, I have talked to each of the three of you individually.
I know that you told me that you already had a meeting with the him.
I attended a, a presentation.
We did give a presentation, but it's not this presentation.
That's what I'm just asking was, so there was already a meeting with one. Was there a meeting with him too?
Not with the Fund for Warren's Future, no.
I'd like to just say one thing if I could, um, and I don't mean to cut off or, or talk about something else, but this is critically important. When we talk about, what, you know, when this ARP money came out and it was a gift honestly for a lot of local communities, uh, like Warren and like Trumbull County to do some, to do some really good things with. We've done some really good things as evidenced by what we see on the agenda today. Uh, we've done some really good things in form of United Way, a lot of nonprofits, a lot of different communities that we've been able to help uh, as far as, uh, green space and other things like that. But when we talk about transformational changes that ARPA money can make, uh, as far as a county, as far as a county seat, uh, this is one of those things where we have to take a hard look at and say, this is something that's a game changer. This is a transformational change for this valley, for this county and for this county seat. Uh, I believe that the, the county needs to take a hard look at this because it's finally defining itself as what we need to be sort of when we grow up. We see the investment in Lordstown and we see, uh, in, in the, in the surrounding areas in the city of Warren. The city of Warren, as opposed to prescribing a remedy to something that, you know, that, that, that didn't fit like around begging a square hole. Said, you know what? There's going to be a need for housing. There's going to be a need for residential housing. There's going to be a need for, for these people to recreate. There's going to be a need for a vibrant downtown. That's what this project is all about and, and making this, uh, the county seat, uh, a destination, a destination to live, work and play. And, um, we know that there's going to be an influx of, of workers, both, um, you know, locally, from outside the area, from outside the country into, into Trumbull County. And this is a, this is a worthwhile project that we can make. Uh, when we talk about transformational changes in Trumbull County, this was one of those projects that I think, uh, fits that bill.
And, uh, to underscore the obvious. Um, when people are coming over from other countries, you know, Asia and Europe to make investments and, and our community, they're coming from places where they don't typically drive and where they come to places where there is typically a public transportation system. And so while I talk about that, it is multifaceted. The, the aptest statistics show the impact of having regional transportation on development and, and, and it's not just you boys versus me. It's an actual fact. It's an actual fact that we really need to make sure that we have a scenario or a situation that's right for people to, to live here. If they're coming here, that's the first thing that they ask. They need to be able to, they need to be able to get around. Millennials and younger people who I'm sure you're. Millennials and younger people who you're, I'm sure you're hoping to attract to this garden districts and all. That's another stat statistic. Millennials prefer not to own.
I agree, but, but citizens in Howland and Champion shouldn't pay for it.
Howland actually supports it.
Here's the, here's the.
Like people in Howland, everyone in Howland supports it.
And I know you're grandstanding on your soapbox here about transportation. We're sort of conflating the two things. Can I just say one thing? This board is not against transportation. You're, you're saying that we're against transportation. I'm not for a seven million dollar transportation system because I think it doesn't fit our needs. We don't need to overspend on transportation. That's where we're fundamentally different. That's all.
Well, the, the plan that they had actually included a transit hub and a transit center, which is near this area, which would actually work very nicely in the development plan that you have because usually where there's a transit hub or, or a vehicle barn, something like that, you're going to have more development and it, it fits very closely.
Is there development around their vehicle barn in Youngstown?
It's, it fits very closely into what you're proposing is all I'm saying, so.
Something I didn't say and should have really when I was doing this presentation. We, we've been engaged with Ultium and Foxconn for a couple of years now, asking, uh, at very high levels, uh, finding out exactly what it was they need, felt they needed for their workers. Now, we were focused on, we were focused on housing and recreation, not on transportation. I don't have an answer to that, but it's a question we can ask. We have that kind of relationship going on with them now. And, uh, you know, the developer actually has had, uh, uh, actual focus groups sitting down with individual workers and, and going through it in great detail. The kind of things they're looking for in housing. So we can, we can and, and would be happy to, uh, facilitate getting a better understanding from them what they need.
And I think a public-private partnership on transportation to me would sit a lot better with the taxpayers than totally public and taxing everybody in the county. So the people in this garden district can get to work at Ultium.
Makes sense.
I, I still think the people should decide, but.
I, I just, just say thank you all, uh, for, for inviting us here and, and I want to.
Unfortunately, you have to state your name and we.
Oh, okay. My name is Doug Franklin, Mayor of the City of Warren, Ohio. Uh, I just want to say thank you all for, for, for your service, for your public service. Um, and I just want to piggyback. For those of you who don't know, uh, me and Mr. Blank before getting together to form the Fund for Warren's Future. Um, he was actually a political opponent of mine running for mayor against me. So it shows you how politics can work if you keep what's important at the forefront. But I, but I think that has some shock value when we went to the business community and asked for their support. But specifically, and, and I know Paula was there. I want, I have to thank the, the commissioners. Because we started this planning process uh, with some funds that the commissioners supported one hundred percent, uh, from the, uh, Community Improvement Corporation to help us bring that, the developer on board. So I just wanted to say I didn't have the
I was.
Time. Yes, you did. And I didn't have the time to officially thank you. Uh, but that was very important and we wouldn't be at this point, uh, without that, without that support from the county. Um, everything that we're doing is in partnership. When we talk about the Appalachia Regional Grant, uh, that's not a city of Warren grant. It's a regional grant. So that's why we're, um, approaching the county to show more partners. Uh, we do have private partners in this grant application, but it's also going to include other communities. I want to thank you because we're also working with the metro park system. Um, and also the Trumbull County Planning Commission. So we believe in partnerships. We, 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 we know that we can't do, uh, be successful if we try to do this alone. Um, so our partnership is critical. It's critical to the strength of our application and also to, to make sure that we have the private investment locked and loaded because that's what they want to see. Um, we've done, we've committed, uh, ten percent of the project costs for, for infrastructure improvements. That's critical to any development. But as, but as Commissioner Cantaln Mason stated, uh, we were all, we're all looking for, um, this one-time shot of money to the ARPA funds to have a transformational impact on our communities, not just the city of Warren, but Trumbull County as a whole. So we stand, um, in lockstep with you in that endeavor. So I want to just thank you all for your time. Uh, I'm right at home in controversial meetings. So it was, no, it's, it's, uh, it's kind of good to see somebody else doing it for a change. But, but thank you for having us. Um, keep up the great work and we look forward to working with you in the future. We don't, we don't really know what that number is, but two million sounds, uh, about the, the right amount. Um, but we all are struggling with these balances in these proposals. And I know you're doing the same thing as it relates to ARPA funds. So I can relate to that because I'm going through the same thing, but I think together we can do a lot to, to really impact our, our, our communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we had, um, oh, in the summer I was contacted by Mr. Blank after having already reached out to another commissioner for a meeting and then proposed for another one. And I suggested making an application and coming to a meeting. We went over all of our applications.
Yeah.
Uh, all right. It was, it's been, I guess, written in the news. I don't always read the trivia, but I'm sure that everyone was aware and, and, um, that's the one thing is we, we have more requests than we can fund. And bringing this back in the summer.
And we're, we're in, we're in the same, we're in the same position. Um, our portal for applications has closed as well. I would have made this a, as a city application. Um, but by the time that we had a lot of the other components in, in place, the portal had closed. Um, so fortunately we, we still have an opportunity to look at, um, proposals, um, outside of the portal. And that's what we're asking you to do the same thing. Thank you.
Well, okay. Well, I do, I do want to say this is, this is near and dear to my heart, everything that you are doing. This is my, was my purpose for, um, studying planning and choosing the internship I chose, because I wanted to look at what needed to happen locally at the state level and federal policy and to have, uh, revitalization of central business districts. So this is so important to me personally. What you're doing is, it's stinging to be choir. Because this is the type of, you know, and, and one of the people, the first people who I got close with when I was interested in, in this field, um, was Alex Faberski. And a lot of what you're, you're doing is piggybacking on his original vision that he had back in, was it the eighties or nineties? Yeah. So I'm, I'm, um, I'm excited that, that you're moving forward and, and for, just for clarification, that CIC, I, I was on there and I sent it person on behalf of myself. The other commissioners had the planning commission as a basic news. The planning commission had their own projects to submit, so they were conflicted in, in a sense. Um, so I'm, I am really happy that this, that you got what you needed and that I could actually see the result of, of the funding and that what you're doing is good.
It's a plan that we have to take to the next level.
Yeah. And it's not just the city. I just want to, I, I just want to make sure everyone realizes, yes, it's, uh, this is the county seat.
Right.
So, okay.
Okay, anybody from the room have anything? Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Uh, Commissioners, uh, some comments made by Commissioner Frenchgo here. I, I need to set the record straight on this. This is damaging to my, uh.
Ego?
No, my, uh, reputation. Regarding the Yankee Lake Project, uh, this is Gary Newbrow, Sanitary Engineer. Last February, uh, Commissioner Frenchgo and Highway Engineer Smith, they falsely accused me of missing a deadline on a grant application for the Yankee Lake Project. After it was looked into.
Cause he did.
I prepared this document to you and gave it to you on February the twenty first, explaining the events. Uh, what happened was that the Department of Development notified me that our project for Yankee Lake was being reconsidered for funding. And there was no action required on my part. Quote, "Development will not be accepting any additional applications at this time. You will be contacted in the coming weeks regarding the status of your application." Then apparently they sent some to other applicants. They asked them for some information. Apparently their applications weren't as complete as mine. And the Department of Development needed more information from them, but mine was basically flawless and they didn't need anything from me. Now, the highway engineer and Commissioner Frenchgo made the accusation and I missed submitting something when I didn't. And if you look at this email that I highlighted right here, this is from Kristen Wallers from the Department of Development. On February the sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, she writes, Gary, no worries. You did not miss any deadlines about submitting or resubmitting new applications. There was nothing missed. And, and this accusation that I dropped the ball on Yankee Lake is completely baseless. And she keeps perpetuating this false narrative. Furthermore, someone told me on Facebook, she's trying to claim that it was because of her work behind the scenes that the Yankee Lake Project was reconsidered for funding. And that she had to pull my, pull us out of the fire because of some mistake I supposedly made, which is totally untrue. And that she, and, and the end result is if she did do anything behind the scenes, it resulted in a big fat zero. We got nothing from that. So just another example of you contributing absolutely nothing.
Okay, Gary. Thank you, Gary.
Just want to set the record straight.
All right.
Jason, Jason, uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Cook would like to speak.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, good morning Commissioners, Jason Cook, Healthy Hearts and Pause Project. I just wanted to invite all three of you, uh, at some point to come out to the property at nine oh nine Martin Luther King Boulevard in Warren, Ohio, and see the progress that we're making out at the shelter and uh, how we're investing in the city of Warren and Trumbull County. And everybody in this room that, that loves dogs and cats, come out and see our new shelter. So that's all I wanted to say. Thanks for your support.
Thank you, Jason. Do wonderful work. Thank you.
Do you have a card, the address and stuff?
And Jason, before, before you got here, you may have heard too, we did, we did vote on and approve the twenty-five thousand dollars to you. So that's something that was done before you got here today.
I know we just went nine oh nine.
Thank you.
Talked to you about a stray and I ended up just keeping it. So thank you.
Okay, anybody's honor the order.
I just want to reiterate, reiterate a few facts about the mass reappraisal. Um, mass reappraisals are done every six years per the ORC five seven one five point three three and five seven one three point oh one. Um, this is not something that was just made, a decision made by the auditor. These were started in twenty twenty-one uh, because of, because it's a hundred and forty-four thousand parcels. It takes a while to get them done, even if I had wanted to do a mass reappraisal on my own. I could not have done that in the seven months that I've been in office. Um, these reappraisals are market-based primarily. So every parcel is visited and, and changes are noted, things, conditions are noted, but the, uh, the actual values are heavily market valued. So if you have not been in a coma the last three years, you know that the market has been very, very hot and that's why the values have gone up as much as they have. Um, there is some legislation in Columbus to try to give some relief on that. There's a lot of back and forth. We don't exactly know what's going to, how that's going to pan out. Um, as mentioned, the new tentative values are on the website, does not include some new construction, doesn't include some demolitions that were recent, those kinds of things. They're tentative. Um, it's really important to note that people can look at those values. If they disagree with the value, they have an opportunity to sign up for an informal review where they can bring in, if they have a fee appraisal that differs greatly from what we have or differs from what we have, they can look at that. Mass reappraisal is very different from fee appraisals, uh, uh, mass reappraisal, they visit the property, they don't go inside, they don't look at every single detail. Fee appraisals are much more detailed. So if you have a fee appraisal that disagrees, you can bring that in. If you've had demolition or something like that, that we haven't picked up, you can bring that in. You can bring evidence of that. Those can be signed up for online. You can do, um, either a virtual, you can do a phone one, you can do in person. And those, that is on our website. So that's opportunities there. Um, as I've mentioned, there's a, a lot of complexity in property taxes. There are different kinds of levies. So it's really too soon to say exactly how much somebody's property taxes are going to go up. At the end of the year, um, after everything has been applied, um, taxes will be, uh, those taxes will be available. You'll get your tax bills when you normally get them about mid-January. If you sell, if you have a, a problem with your property value at that time, you can do a formal complaint through the Board of Revision and you'll get a hearing. Um, it's really important to note because I heard someone misspeak a little earlier. You're not appealing your taxes at that time. You're appealing your values. There is a difference between values and taxes. Thank you.
Martha, just for the record too, just because someone's value of their house goes up doesn't mean they pay more on a lot of the millage of the local taxes. It's only a set amount. They're still going to pay the same.
Well, and that's where it gets complicated because some, some things are fixed at a certain rate in millage, right? Certain, certain levies are like that. Certain levies are fixed, are set to cer-, uh, to raise a certain amount of revenue. So all of that gets put together in a taxing district and you come up with an effective rate. And so those ones that are just set to, uh, to raise a certain amount of revenue in the taxing district, if the value goes up in the whole taxing district, the rate actually goes down. So when you have all of those factors that you have to consider, that's why it gets so complicated. If you look at your tax bill at any tax bill, you have what's called the full rate and you have the effective rate. So you're never paying the whole full millage that you have for every single levy. You're paying a calculated effective rate and that's where it gets complicated and has to go to the state and the state actually gives us those rates.
Okay, anybody else have anything for the good? Yes, sir.
To ask if you can explain the difference between a fee appraisal and, uh, and, uh, um, mass reappraisal, like the specific differences.
I did give a specific difference and integ-, our, our fellow from integrity said to tell you about four hundred dollars, but.
No, I mean, the difference, there, what are the different appraisal types?
There, well, a mass reappraisal is exactly that. You're, you're, you're appraising all of the properties.
Types of appraisals?
Right. There's two types of appraisals. There's a fee appraisal.
All right, this isn't, this isn't, let's try to trip up the auditor and see if I'm smarter than she is or not. Cause we're not going to play that game.
There's cost approach, there's income base, there's comparable sales, and then there's the mass reappraisal. I just want to know.
The mass reappraisal is prime, I'm not going to get into every single detail because I am not a professional appraiser. I, I hire those people. And actually those people were hired before I came in. However, I have learned quite a bit about it and I understand that you're trying to just pretend like you know a lot and that's fine. But the, the reality is there is a big difference between a mass reappraisal and a fee appraisal. A fee appraisal is more in-depth. The mass reappraisals are done by market, although every single property is visited. However, we don't go inside of every single property. A fee appraisal does that. And there's a formula that is, that we utilize from the state as far as the market goes. And that's actually what's pending in the legislature. That formula may be changing.
So I just want to be able to explain for the board and for anyone who's paying attention, there are three different types of fee appraisals. And if you want to. No, okay. So what I'm, what I want to explain is that a fee appraisal is based on, you could get them the most, you could get them based on income approach or the most common one would be comparable. most common one would be comparable, comparable sales. And, um, the mass appraisal is more of an equalization process to try to.
What does that have to do with anything in this we're talking about?
It's to.
Why are we, can we move on?
The property taxes or to bring all the values up to more of an equal.
It's, it's tax equalization. It's not a market stabilization as you addressed before and you're, when you used your little, um, gobbledygook, right? Word salad. That's the word I was thinking of. So I know you like to use reward salad. It is primarily market based. It's not, yes, you're going, yes, you're going to have comparables within your neighborhood. If there's a property that's similar to yours. A lot of it is based on, of what we're coming up with that people are complaining about, our sales that were actually done where somebody paid $229,000 for a property in July of 2022, and they think it's worth less right now. And that's not the way it works. We can, you can go in, yes, I know you, you and your, your ex-boyfriend gave you fee appraisal lessons. I got that. But, but the reality is it's different. It's not as in depth.
Opportunity, you need to sit yourself down and you don't have an opportunity to just sit up there and insult me. No, but, but the.
You're not the only one.
Do, do you have a boyfriend? Like, are you jealous or something? Seriously?
Ma'am, okay. You want to talk about my personal life? I was married for 30 years to a fine, fine man.
What have you studied? Because I went to appraisal institute and.
What have I studied? Okay. I have a degree in government with a concentration in public administration. I also have 29 years of a successful business where I took very good care.
Living in your house and that was your business. Okay.
People living in my house? What are you talking about? You don't know what you're talking about. I had no one, none of my clients lived in my home.
You don't want to, I warned you before, you don't want to open cans of worms where you don't want to tread. You want to open up the doors to your house? You want to open the doors to your income?
I had no one living in my home.
Just sit down.
We can go to the commissioner.
Done with your insults. Sit down.
I hope so. Hope so. It needs to be reported. It's, it's a damn shame.
I'm fine. Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, hi, uh, Mark Joseph, Niles, Ohio, or Niles. Um, I, I have a couple of things real quick, hopefully. Number one, the gentleman that spoke earlier with the mayor. I, I, they were talking about a project in this, in this area, correct? And they were looking for $2 million coming out of the commissioners or the county, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I wanted to make sure I'm on the right page. The only, the one.
Two million of ARPA money.
What's that?
ARPA money, just so you're clear, not general fund money.
Thanks. Um, the one thing that I, and I work for a nonprofit, Western Reserve Independent Living Center. So we work with a lot of, uh, consumers that are struggling, not just because of transportation. This area is, I think it is, uh, targeted as a food desert. I don't know if you've heard that term or not, or you understand what that term means. I don't know. And I don't mean to, you know, if you don't know, you don't know. I did not hear him say anything about a food, uh, getting rid, taking us out of that zone of a food desert. He talked about transportation. They talked about businesses coming in, but they didn't say anything about, and they talked about building the, the community, which all sounds great. But I didn't hear anything about the actual consumers, uh, the people that need these little, um, pods, if you will. So I'm just saying, when they come to you with their application and they have everything laid out, can you please keep in the back of your head that there's gotta be something for the people where they can get food?
Yeah, they're, sir, if you looked at the more detailed map and you looked at the full presentation that they have, that the market, a, a grocery store was included in their original map and a whole bunch of different, uh, food concepts that they had. Everything from restaurants to food court to a fresh, uh, fresh market that they want to incorporate.
When he was saying food court, that's what he was talking about.
And also just so you know, the Board of Commissioners and I believe it was last year, uh, we passed, uh, through ARPA money, uh, gave a big, um, a sizable chunk of money towards the, the, the food truck, the grocery truck that goes to these food deserts. And, um, we actually bought them a new truck. So.
We're, yeah, thank you. And we're moving in that direction.
Fresh food, fresh food and those, fresh, bringing fresh food to those people that can't otherwise, uh.
So one of the concepts of planning is mixed, mixed use. So whenever you hear someone saying they're promoting mixed use, that means that they're bringing people into an area where there's going to be residential and there's going to be commercial. When you have that concept, then that makes the area more feasible. Because you have housing and people moving into the area for people to, for an investor to put in a, a grocery store or market. So those types of things pop up. One of the principles of revitalization is having mixed use, mixed use. So everything that they're doing completely coincides with promoting an area where there are grocery stores and other services because they're bringing a population and that's part of the plan is housing. So.
Okay. So they always consider some type of food.
Yeah.
All right. That's very, oh, thanks. Thanks. And then the, and the next question I have, and please, I don't want to open up a can of worms. I really don't.
Then don't.
But I am, and I get a lot of my fellow workers, because we deal heavily with transportation. We do. Almost all of our contributors are either in wheelchairs, blind, you name it, they got the handicap and we take care of them. And a major piece of that is transportation, obviously. I would, I don't know if we're entitled to see it or not. I don't know. But I would love to have the opportunity or if you could take just a sliver of time out of the meeting, where you, when they, when everyone talks about the seven million, I don't, I would like to see a balance sheet.
I have it.
Do you have that?
Yeah. Actually, we can have Dean Harris. I would like to have him come in and re, rep, represent, uh, his original plan for Trumbull County because I actually have a copy of the paperwork associated with it and the slideshow. So that's what I mean is there's a lot of talk about numbers, but it doesn't show, and it's not just big buses. There's zones, there's smaller transportation. There's just a lot of, you know, misinformation being disseminated about it. But I have the entire plan and it's.
If there's a way that you guys can do that and present it to us, I don't know how anybody else feels. But I would like to know, okay, if we're going to spend some.
Email it to you too. If you want it emailed to you, you can contact Dean Harris. Dean Harris will send you a copy of it.
Oh, okay.
The email, the plan that he had.
Thank you.
And we will have that public meeting still that we encourage you to be a part of. They don't want you to be an advisor on that, that we talked about in past meetings after we get, Commissioner Cantal Mesa gets through his meeting today and I get through mine tomorrow. We'll both have a clearer picture on our end and then we can have this public meeting that we, we've been talking about.
And the more, the, the more I can research any of this, then I, hopefully I can be a better contributor.
If you want to stick around, I could even give you a hard copy of that before you leave.
I'd love it.
And I, and I did see something last week. I got to tell you, you were here last week.
Yes.
And unfortunately I watched you wait downstairs more than 45 minutes for a ride to come pick you up. And I did not like that at all.
And honestly, you know, and you know how I feel about our transportation. I, I think WRT and I think Comfort Caravan are fabulous. I really do. But I know the weight and we've talked about that on, and aside, it's, they're, they're getting hammered. They are.
Yep.
They may not admit it. They may not, they'll, they'll, uh, what's his name? Uh, Dave will, he'll pull up his bootstraps and he'll get in there and help us. But, uh, there's been four or five times where I had to wait over an hour.
I did, I did not like that.
A year ago when, when my back was broken and I wasn't able to, I wasn't even supposed to be walking, but I still came to the meetings. I, I have waited for an hour for.
It happens. It, it, and it's, and it's no one's fault. It's just is. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Can anybody else have anything for the greater good of the county? Okay, phone lines. If you're on the line, you can hit star six and unmute yourself and announce your name and where you're from. Give it a second here because there's usually a delay. It's star six if you're hearing me on the phone line, if you'd like to speak. I guess one, one last thing I'd like to say too, is we recognize some different things or whatever, but um, something I am proud to be able to talk about today. It is hunting season now in Trumbull County. Duck season opens on Saturday. We have more than a hundred blinds just on Mosquito Lake of people, majority of them from outside of the county. We'll have more than 10,000 people hunting Trumbull County over the next month that live outside of Trumbull County limits. And when you see someone at a local gas station or Monty's or one of the bait shops or something, they're wearing camo, that's someone that's coming to this county to spend their dollars in our county. So thank them for what they do. It's not, if you see a guy in camo or blaze orange, that's not bad. They're releasing more than 12,000 pheasants up in Grand River Wildlife Area. And with the duck season, again, this is a, a major duck hunting spot for the state of Ohio. And it's a major economic engine for this county. Uh, the amount of money brought into this county through hunting is enormous. And that's where we need to do a better job of keeping those wallets here overnight and not the people driving back and forth during the day. We need to find a way to get infrastructure up north, lodging, restaurants, so that when they come here, they don't stay somewhere on the way home. And the mosquito refuge itself, they have more than 300 people get drawn to deer hunt there that come from all over the state, Dayton, Cincinnati, Columbus, uh, in the statewide drawing that they do. They come, they stay for the day, the next day. And, uh, and when they're here, they spend their money. So these are people that are recreating in the county, consumptive users that are spending money here. So just want to talk about that and thank them for coming here. And again, if you're a landowner up there, if you're someone that sees somebody, you know, thank them for what they do because they're spending money here in our county. Without, I'm going to take a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Thank you all.